allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, as far as attendance, we have a full house tonight. All board members are present, so thank you all for being here. I'm going to ask, I don't, I didn't pull up the visitor comment link, so can I ask, Lowly, do we have anyone? We do? Could you please help me announce that? Okay, Steven Crosskin. Yeah, yeah, come on out, take your leisure. The, I think the microphone should be on already. There we go.
Great, thank you. Ready to go? All right. Good evening. My name is Steven Crosskin, and I'm the parent of two girls in the Southern Lee High School District. Last January, our superintendent drafted a letter supporting the PIA sanctioning the formation of girls wrestling as a PIA sport to provide our middle school and high school athletes an opportunity to compete with other female athletes across our region and state. On February 14th last year, the 100th PA High School sanctioned girls wrestling. In May, the PIA voted, and it was officially placed on our PIA jurisdiction last July. While 17 other programs in the District 11 now have girls-sponsored school teams, and over 180 high schools across the state of PA have a school-sponsored sanctioned girls team, Southern Lee High is lagging behind. I'm extremely proud of my daughter and the other girl wrestlers who go out there and compete usually against boys because they do not have the opportunity to wrestle against other girls as part of Southern Lee High. One of the greatest benefits of forming a girls team is that it provides a girl with an equal opportunity and allows them to enter tournaments and compete against other girls. Without that, they are forced to only wrestle boys. In fact, at this upcoming weekend's junior high district wrestling tournament, my daughter is being denied the opportunity to wrestle in the girls division and required to wrestle in the boys division because we do not offer girls middle school and high school sanctioned team. While other girls will be competing in the girls junior high division and earning medals for their school, I have to explain to my daughter that she doesn't have that same opportunity. Research shows that if you build it, they will come. The number of girls that are currently wrestling for our boys team is not representative of the number of girls that would wrestle if there were a girls team. We currently have girls in our district who compete at the national level and are winning national awards and could certainly win PIA medals, but don't wrestle for our school in large part because we don't have a girls team for them. Looking at an area school like Becca, they had 37 girls sign up for the wrestling team within two weeks of hiring their new head coach. If we provide the girls program, the girls will join the program and gain incredible skills that will serve them throughout their lives. I'd like to ask that you visit the sanctioned PA website and learn more about girls wrestling and what makes it the fastest growing sport in the U.S. I understand that there are conversations taking place now that will hopefully change the opportunity for girls wrestling in Southern Lee High. As a parent of an eighth grade girl wrestler denied the opportunity to wrestle girls teams for Southern Lee High, I wanted to speak with you tonight and ask for your full support as the discussion of girls wrestling begins to make its way to the board for Southern Lee High. Finally, I'd like to ask the board to officially review Board Policy 1, 2, 3.2 and consider if this policy should be amended to allow the girls who already participate on the boys district recognized Interscholastic PIA sporting team the opportunity to enter the same for a girls team without requiring the three-year club status. Six seconds left. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there, there, okay, thank you, Ms. Lowly. There's no one else who signed up to speak in visitor comment, so that concludes our visitor comment. We appreciate comment period. Moving on to superintendent updates.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaiman. And sir, thank you for those thoughts, and we'll get back to you with some, we are very seriously looking into that issue, and we'll get back to you with something. So thank you for your presentation. Our, our meeting is going to be intentionally short tonight because we have a number of things that Ford has to address in executive session, but I do want to offer just three quick announcements and one bit of good news, depending upon your perspective. All right. The first is that we had a really great bocce ball competition down at Upper Perkyoman High School, and I wanted to extend our gratitude to Mrs. Bookman, who is here in the back, who oversees this, to our coach, Mr. Taliani, the, the students who were participating, Upper Perkyoman, for hosting us. So it really was an exciting event. Our Unified Sports, it's not moving maybe as quickly as we would all love, but good things are happening. We're making progress. And again, I just wanted to offer that word of thanks for the work that's going on. I also want to let the board know, and I know some of our members were there, that the Southern Lee High Education Foundation had a gathering on the 6th of February. They continue to advocate on behalf of the school district in raising funds. A question came up, I remember maybe some meetings ago about will the dual enrollment program be something a one-time reimbursement? Right, okay, right. And, and they are committed to having that continue to recur. And the latest effort that they're undertaking is a process where they're working with Dr. Trinkle and others in her department to develop an application that we would send out to all of our teachers. And again, we actually have to speak with Mrs. Boucher on this too, right? But the idea would be that we have incredibly talented teachers in this district who have all kinds of like really cool, innovative, thoughtful ideas. And perhaps if some of those teachers were to apply to the foundation, the foundation would be willing to fund those ideas in support of, you know, what teachers would aspire to do in the classroom. So that's in the early stages. It's in its infancy, actually. And we have lots more to talk about it, but I thought it was a really nice idea I want to bring back to the board in my report about the foundation. Also, in a kind of a practical update, we are going to be having, and this will be released to the community, we're going to be having safety drills that involve all levels of local law enforcement and emergency management. It'll be taking place on the 21st of February. We will see very likely heavy law enforcement traffic, both in vehicles and pedestrian traffic. And we want to get word out to the community to let everyone know that it is only a drill, to use the, the phrase. And so, again, I want to thank Dr. Trinkle for her ongoing work to make sure that our buildings, our staff, and our students remain safe, and our partners in law enforcement and emergency management for participating in this drill. Yes.
Was that in the evening or during the school day?
Is in the evening.
Okay, just, so it won't be something to prep your students for?
No, it will not. And, and that will be clear in the announcement that goes out. It will be six o'clock-ish, it will be going on. And so, and then the other, the other thing, and again, you'll perhaps see a crack of a smile, Mr. Suma and Mrs. Lowly are in the process of announcing that sadly, we will be off tomorrow because of a snow day. And so, that word, that word will be going out soon. And if you could just maybe contain your enthusiasm, some of our students who are here will be off. It is one of our last, we have one more after tomorrow, actual snow day where everybody's off, no work, go sleigh riding, have fun. We have one more after it, after which time we're going to have to, you know, come back and maybe talk about some flexible instruction time because, you know, we're running through our allotted number of snow days. So you might need a moment to test your, and that actually might be underway right now.
We're on live YouTube right now, so we're live.
Okay. So with that bit of good news, I thank you for the opportunity, and that concludes my report. And I do, we're not, right. So we can move on to the federal grants.
Yeah, but I just want to say one thing. I did, while, thank you for the superintendent report, I did want to mention, I saw someone just missed the cutoff at the end of visitor comment and come in and sign in to speak now. If you would like to speak now, because you didn't intend to stay the rest of the meeting and you just got stuck in traffic like a few of us did, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to speak now since we just passed it. If you'd like to wait until the end, that's fine too. But I saw you signing in. Would you like to speak now? Okay, that's great. That, I'll give you that option. So, Ms. Lowly, could you please kindly help me out with this community member's name? I'm sorry, Julie? Bird, thank you. Okay. Yeah, please, please join us with the mic. The mic should already be turned on. And, thanks.
Good evening. My name is Julie Bird, and I have a child in second grade at Hopewell Elementary and a child who will attend kindergarten next year. I am here to advocate for full-day kindergarten. It's easy to look at statistics and research about half-day versus full-day kindergarten and find statistics to justify any position you wish to take on the issue. But I'm not raising a statistic. I'm raising a child. I would like to speak openly about my own child and his experience. Some background, my son is twice exceptional. He has had a 504 plan in place for ADHD since before the first day of kindergarten. He has also identified as gifted and has a GIEP. He attended morning kindergarten, navigated the bus, academics, specials, and had Mrs. Oaks, who was fantastic, and overall had a pretty good year. The only part of kindergarten that he did not enjoy was the homework, which I would presume was deemed necessary since the kindergarten day is only two hours and 36 minutes long. Homework for five-year-olds to make up for lost time and still have them ready for first grade. As an adult, I understand it. My child did not. Then we transitioned to first grade. He again had an amazing teacher and the instructional aid assigned to his class built a nice rapport with him. But first grade was a struggle, not academically. If I'm honest, he has yet to be challenged academically by anything in school that isn't an app, but that's a separate issue for another time. The biggest difficulty that he faced was the transition to the full-day schedule. Every day I would hear, "It's too long. I want to go home. Can you pick me up early, Mom?" On days where I had to drop him off at school at 9:05, because he attended outpatient occupational therapy beforehand, I had to literally pull and push to get him into the building. And I felt for him. All of a sudden, he went from two hours and 36 minutes of school and a fun bus ride home with only kindergarten peers and the sweetest driver, to six and a half hours at school and then a longer ride home, an additional four hours. Imagine you're five. Your brain is every which way all at once, and you can't help it because that's how you're wired. And now from your perspective, you're losing four hours of time at home or with the comfort of loved ones. It was hard for him, really, really hard. Where full-day kindergarten would have served him well, would have been in the transition to public school in the first place. I can't in good conscience speak for everyone with ADHD or any other developmental disability, but the change in routine was massively difficult for him. Of note, I have had similar discussions with other ADHD parents in the district. Had my son started with full day, this, that, that is what would have become second nature. He would have associated school with the same amount of time as long as he was going to the same school building. The struggles with wanting to leave and having to be talked into going to school each day, even through April that year, could have been avoided. To the school board, this may or may not be a perspective unique to my child and our, our situation. Except for the office staff who have had to convince him not only to try not to sneak out the door with me after I brought him in, it was largely a home issue. He, for the most part, does what he's asked to at school and is not reported to be a behavior concern. I suspect that my younger child, who does not have a diagnosed disability, will transition well regardless of the schedule. But I am not alone in raising a child with a 504, whose condition predisposes him to crave consistent routine, resist change, and feel high levels of anxiety because of changes he can't control. I am asking you to consider all kids, even the outliers, and how we can best serve them as full-day kindergarten discussions move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I do know it's a topic that has been discussed here before, and we expect to address at some point at a committee level. So, thank you.
No, that, exactly, absolutely.
Okay, great, thanks. So then, yes, Dr. Mann, moving on to review of federal grants.
Yes. I want to thank Dr. Trinkle and her staff for the work she does with federal grants. We are in the midst of it now. One of our requirements is to make periodic public reports about progress we're making on, on these grants. And so, Dr. Trinkle has a brief report for us this evening. Not to put pressure on you about brief, so has a report. Okay, all right.
It's brief, and partly because it does revolve around school safety. So there's not a large amount of information that I can share, but just general, basic, the School Safety and Security Committee, which is also PCCD, which is the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, which is the Act PCCD, which is where the three grants we'll be applying for come from. They were announced in the middle of January for, to support further physical security and behavioral health needs of the school community. There are two non-competitive grants that we can apply for and one competitive grant that we can apply for. They're, they're formula-based funding solicitations, so they're based on our 21, 22, we're all ringing. I'm actually getting them on both phones.
Someone decided.
All right, good. I got, I just got three district phone call notifications, so that's good.
Well coordinated, Mike.
Anyway, they're all funding based, they're formula-based based on our ADM, which is our average daily membership. So that's a snapshot of a day and time of the financially, what we're financially responsible for, for each student. And that was from the 21, 22 school year. So that's what our funding allocation was based on. So there are three. The meritorious application, which is non-competitive, we were given a certain amount of, amount of money for that non-competitive grant, and that is to focus on targeted school safety. So we've, we've taken some, some time for all three grants to plan internally about where we see that best supporting our needs on our facilities or in, in school-based community ways to, to focus on, on things like all hazard plans or targeted school safety measures. The second grant is a mental health grant application that is a little bit higher than the meritorious in the funding allocation. And that is, as it states, to focus on behavioral health needs of our students in our school community. So we've also met internally for that one to plan for some long-term goals. And the grant runs till about December 31st of 2025. So they call it a two-year grant, but we were not notified of the, the allocation until January. So we've already kind of gotten halfway through year one before the applications are due. The, the competitive application is to address both physical security and behavioral health needs. This is a competitive grant. We are not, we're not guaranteed an allocation, but we are going to put our best foot forward to put an application in here. We are competing with public and private schools and law enforcement. And the last time a grant like this was offered was the 1920 school year. The, there are some limitations on, on how much we can put in this grant from a financial perspective. There are a few school districts that are not under the same parameters as we are for great need, like Philadelphia or Pittsburgh. They have different expectations. Then, once we submit that application, PCCD reviewers will, will notify us if we have been awarded that allocation. All three, like I said, deal with school safety and behavioral health. And we'll have great impact from the two that we will apply for and hope, you know, for the best for the competitive grant. We certainly don't want to miss an opportunity. We've had several internal meetings, whether it be with facilities, student services, our district-wide safety committee has met and has taken feedback and taken, we've given them a lot of perspective and had some significant dialogue over the last year and a half about what we'd like to focus on. That came from our walkthroughs last year, and we are planning those again this year. And like I said, the, the applications will be due on the, by the 29th of February. One has been completed today, so we're on pace to hit that deadline no problem. And PCCD is optimistic and indicating that they will release those funds in April. I use the word optimistic because it took about six months to get the allocated funds for our last application process. So we have a two-year plan in place. I think we're, we're well positioned to do some really, really positive things for our district, both behaviorally and school safety targeted.
Did not say, but it is, it is true. And in a way, it's self-serving for administration to say this, but many of these grants, nearly all of them, are driven based upon student need, often measured by aid ratio. And so, we are not playing, and, and I'm saying we should, but we're not playing on a level playing field. And we are, even if our grants are of the highest quality, as they are, we often are not successful in, in the competitive areas because, again, they're, they're often driven by, by aid ratio. A perfect example, last year, we, we wrote a dual enrollment grant. We have excellent dual enrollment program. I thought we submitted an extraordinary grant. We were denied and actually reached out and said, "What, what's going on?" And they said, "Well, your aid ratio makes it hard for you to get this." And, you know, they acknowledged it was a good application. So, again, just a, a point of consideration. Thank you, Dr. Trinkle, if there's any, maybe questions.
I don't have a question. I just want to extend the board's thanks and the community's thanks to Dr. Trinkle. She is the person who heads up our grant writing process, and it's a whole lot of detailed work and extra work, which, as you just heard, may or may not be fruitful, but it's still worth going after. But thank you for that detailed work that is not easy to do. We really appreciate, the community appreciates it. Taxpayers appreciate it. Moving on to review of the proposed facilities projects?
Yes.
This is not for a vote. This is just information for this evening?
Yes, we are presenting this information in the hopes that the board will consider it at our next meeting to approve a chiller project and a roof project at Liberty Bell Elementary School. And I, I really will defer to Mr. Boyer and the Facility Committee and Mr. Pepe, who've had a chance to review this issue carefully. The actual proposed documents are contained on the agenda. They're linked right in there if you wanted to check them out. And so, Mr. Boyer, Mr. Pepe, I turn it over to you for your, your thoughts and recommendations.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Mann. As a Facilities Committee, we met on February 6th at our intermediate school. And what we talked about, as Dr. Mann referred to, the various details revolving around the chiller project and also the roof project at, at Liberty Bell School. In regards to going through those, the Committee in Review does propose to move that along for recommendation for vote. The information is provided, as Dr. Mann referred, for review, and we will be putting that on the agenda for vote later at the end of this month. In addition, at the meeting, we did talk about various grant opportunities that are potentially coming down the pipeline. Unfortunately, as, as Dr. Mann referred, in regards to the competitive and the aid ratio, we do anticipate that some of these grants are going to fall into that perspective, into that bucket. However, we will go ahead and pursue those as we should, in the hopes that maybe we do get awarded for some of those, and it can help us out with some of the various projects that we may have here for the chiller and roof and/or potentially what is coming down. And there's nothing, but what potentially could be coming down the pipeline in years to come. Additionally, we also talked in detail a little bit about ideas revolving around the Southern Lee High School library. Right now, it's just discussion. There's no formalized plans whatsoever. It's just facilitating what other school districts or other facilities are doing, and also asking for feedback from our staff in the building and also students too, I believe, Dr. Trinkle, in regards to what folks would like to see for repurposing our high school library here. As for that, there'll be future conversation and discussion there. As for meetings, as of right now, our next meeting for the Facilities Committee is going to be the first week of April. I don't think we have a specific date outlined just yet, Dr. Mann, so we'll have to refer on that. But first week of, yeah, first week of April will be the next meeting. We will be skipping over the first week of March as that there is not many needs that need to be discussed at this time. And Dr. Or, Dr. Pepe and Mike, Mike, yeah, sorry. It's been a day. They will be unavailable. They'll be at conferences, so we decided to move to the first week of April. As for the meetings, we will be having the meetings revolving around various buildings at the district. I know in the past, it's always been held in one specific spot, but being that it is for facilities, I thought that it would make a lot of sense for us to have the ability to get in some of the other buildings and potentially, if we have any projects, we'll be in the building. We can review them while we're there. So anybody attending or planning to attend these meetings, please make sure that you're looking out for the announcement on the website and be mindful of the fact that the location will be changing every month. And that's all I got.
Are there any, thanks for that very much, Eric. And that rolls us right into committee reports, but I'll loop back and say if there were any, we're going to take a vote on this later in the month. Feel free to review the information. If you have any questions, reach out, or if you have any questions now, feel free. Mr. Pepe, thanks for your work on this. Anything to add? You, like, this has been anticipated, and we've been going over this. We really appreciate the work.
Yeah, I think the only, the only thing to consider is that this is comprehensive. The proposals address all phases of the work from design spec, preparation to bid process, review and analysis, award, and construction management. And this addresses both the Level One essential building system with the chiller that was identified in the KCBA study back in 2018, as well as the roof, which falls under Level Two, which is building skin. So these are both projects that need to move forward. And we're appreciative of the work that EI and Mike Warbag did in helping get the proposals together for us to review.
Thank you. And this is, forgive me if someone said this, this is anticipated completion summer of 2025?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, these, we would be looking to do bidding in the fall and setting the agenda for the summer of 2025, correct?
Thank you.
For both projects.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Then rolling through committee reports, I'll just keep going around the table. I know that Melissa Torba, you have a committee report for Technology Committee?
Yes, thank you. We conducted, the Technology Committee is new to the district, and we conducted our first meeting on January 30th, where we began to review the hardware and contracts and processes and projects that we're starting now to be ready and prepared for the upcoming school year 24, 25. Our next meeting is to be held February 22nd, and that'll be at 4:15 in the admin building conference room. We look forward to seeing the community there. You might be thinking, well, wait a minute, what does the, what's the purpose of a Technology Committee? And it's really where we can just review, you know, issues that are related to technology that are including not only the infrastructure, but also technology support and the connection to instruction. It is our duty to review such items and recognize our successes. Dr. Mann shared a lot of wins, a lot of things that we are doing that maybe sometimes we take for granted. The fobs, the doors, the copiers, because they were archaic. They could be in the Smithsonian.
At this very hot second, but the, the day is coming very soon. But thank you for the thought.
We are, we are excited about it. We're anxiously awaiting.
I will say that, yes, the fobs aren't situated because I saw the Jimmy rigging that needed to happen in order to get through the door firsthand, so.
I'm deflecting any, anything until after the holiday. What, Mike, starting President's Day, yeah, starting President's Day.
Well, it's nice to recognize that. It's a work in progress. But it, we need to recognize our, our successes and also identify our challenges. It's our duty to see those challenges and find approaches to tackle them and implement improvements in order to serve not only our students, our staff, and our community. So we look forward to February 22nd. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I'll continue around the horn of the table. I'm Chair of the Policy Committee. Policy Committee did meet. We did not discuss or review any policies. We, sorry. I was just here. I was like, is that my feedback? Okay, good. No, no. Oh, you're good. You're good. I just want to ignore if some, I needed to know something else. So, Policy Committee, we had a first committee meeting. Dr. Ick Little gave a great presentation reviewing how policy sometimes has a natural life cycle, and the Policy Committee discussed how it would tackle, looking at comprehensively all of our policies. We discussed the, the need to cycle through those over perhaps a, a four, every four-year period would be our goal. We talked about a calendar setting and how, you know, we'd be looking at things that would be impacting potentially anything we wanted to roll out in the next academic year now in the spring. And so, we will, our, I believe our next scheduled meeting, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, is March 6th, the first Wednesday of the month in the admin building at, for this, it's 2 o'clock. We want to accommodate administrative schedules who are helping us with this, but know that the process of the Policy Committee will be to look at the policy initially in committee. And then, just as you heard full policy readout and just, you know, voting at this board meeting, that is how all policy will continue to be approved, so that the public will get a chance, actually, earlier in the day if you choose to attend, and also later in the evening to weigh in on any of the policy we're going through. We didn't review any policy, but we're looking forward to doing that in our next meeting and going forward and, and setting that schedule. Thank you for the great presentation, Dr. Ick Little, and thanks for Dr. Trinkle and Dr. Mann and our Policy Committee members for attending. It was a great meeting. We'll look forward to good things. Let's see, I am also the CLIU representative for the board. The IU does not have a February meeting, so I have nothing to report on, nor will I until March. And moving on to, what, what, would you like to go first, Mr. Carney? I mean, not first, next, Mr. Carney?
The ACMC will be meeting February 21st. There was post, there was no need to have it last month, so it was canceled. And then, we will be having our first education meeting, a committee meeting. It will be February 27th, 4:15, at the, in the ad building. Dr. Trinkle, thank you for all your help in working with me on the agenda. Pretty much what we figured for the first, since this is our first one, is just looking at curriculum where we are now, looking at curriculum, where, some thoughts on what could be. be. Immediate needs were Spanish immersion and 6th and 7th grade social studies, so they're definitely on the agenda, but kindergarten, we hear you. That'll be talked about definitely in our committee at some point. LCTI is also, I'm on LCTI, but I'll, I'll see if Mr. Mon has anything to share first before I share what I wrote.
Yep, go ahead. We had discussed it a minute ago, you asked if you could do it, so I said, that's great.
Okay. For LCTI, on January 24th, I attended the Skills, the Showcase, Skills USA, and I was happy to see that eight Southernly High students were chosen by their instructors to participate in this competition. There's about 60 different fields where they compete. We had a crime scene investigation, web design, electronics tech, commercial baking, cosmetology, restaurant service, and health knowledge bowl. So congratulations to Lindsay, Eli, Gabe, Kayla, Madison, Samantha, and Kendall. And then after that night, I think they determined who was moving on to state, so I don't know if, if any of them made it, but they were privileged to compete in the first place. Guidance counselors, the tour at LCTI will be October 14th. Enrollment is now open for first priority classes until March 1st. And then I was very impressed with a future educator program that they have, having been somebody that went through education classes, now, right now, I think it's only two students, but they're looking to expand it to ninth, all the way down to 9th grade. And these students go into schools, they're doing things that I didn't do until my freshman year in college. They're going into, Allentown Schools was one of them, and then they graduate with 18 credits, college credits. And also, I, they do have the 988 number on the back of their ID badges. They, they used to have the hotline number, and then they shortened it to 988 as soon as it came out, they've been part of it. They said they're guidance counselors, actually love it. It was a guidance counselor that recommended it.
Thank, thank you very much.
The only thing is, the, the budget is ongoing for the LCTI budget, and it's within the act level, so we should be getting that soon, right? We have a copy, but yes, but we'll be discussing that.
Okay, thank you very much. Have I missed anyone reporting out through committee work or any otherwise? All right, in that case, we will be moving on to, does any, do we have any new business to discuss?
I would like to discuss, actually, what a visitor, some of our visitor comments regarding girls wrestling.
Sure, Chris, go ahead.
Let's just have a discussion, if that's okay?
Yep, if you, just make sure you're speaking into the mic so we can all hear you, great.
Yeah, I believe, can you hear me now?
Yeah, thanks.
So I was, I mean, I was pretty struck that 17 out of the schools within our district had girls wrestling, and I was, I was very, I think, proud when, when Dr. Mann had, had addressed the board and asked if the board would support sanctioned PA for girls wrestling, and we were, we were one of the first 100 to do so. And I believe it was 100 schools needed to essentially give their support towards girls wrestling to make it an official PIA double A sport, so I was very, you know, proud to, to be on that, and appreciate that, and it has been a year, so I, I would like to just have a discussion to see where our current board stands with regard to encouraging girls wrestling within the junior high and, and varsity high school. I'd like to see if, if the board has support and just communicate that, the support, that support to Dr. Mann, because I, I do understand there's been some discussion, and I'd love to hear if, if you're prepared, and if not, I, I didn't, I know I didn't talk to you about this ahead of time today, but just as much information as to, to where we are, I understand that there's a budgetary process for, you know, for, for athletics. And I'd also like to discuss if it's okay, I believe Mr. Crosskin had brought up one of our policies, 123 dot dash 2.
I made a note of that for the Policy Committee.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's something I'd like to discuss, and I guess where administration sees girls wrestling, you know, there's been some discussion on, does it have to be a club sport initially? And from my reading, and it was relatively brief, but my reading of that policy is that, you know, this is a, a district, it's going to be a district-recognized interscholastic PIA double A sporting team slash program. It would not necessarily be a club sport, or it does not necessarily have to become a club sport initially, and, and I, you know, please correct me if I'm, if I'm incorrect in that interpretation.
I'll just, I'll give a quick history on that, is the last time that that, to my knowledge, the last time that policy was referenced was when we had boys volleyball, I believe boys volleyball is the last sport that was approved to be a varsity sport at the high school level, and before that, it was a club sport, and it progressed through that process. I honestly believe it was a club sport for more than three years, and then they became and were approved to be a varsity sport. So that is the last time, and boys, that was probably, I'm guessing here, five years ago? Is it my best guess? But yes, it's, it's, so it's not something that we have even looked at in that time? And with that history, I'll hand it over to Dr. Mann.
And I guess I just wanted to, just regarding that, because our definition of a club sport is a board-approved sporting team or organization that holds regular practices and may participate in contests, but is not recognized by the Board of School Directors as an interscholastic PIA double A sports team or program.
Right, so it would be similar to chess club or something, yeah.
Exactly, yes. And if we recognize girls wrestling as, as what it is, which is a interscholastic PIA double A sports team or program, it would not necessarily be a club sport by our definition. Is that correct?
Well, I'll offer my thoughts, not having read the policy, but kind of remembering it, because I think we had it with one of the football teams wanting to start a, and I forget which one.
A freshman team, a freshman team.
And so, in, in reading the policy strictly, it, it would, I would, I would interpret it, again, not having read it recently, I would interpret it to say that any new team coming in has to show its progress as a club, show that it's sustainable, have numbers in, and, and all that, okay? And, and so strictly, if we just stuck to the policy, I think that would be a requirement for the team. However, I would say, in discussing perhaps with the Policy Committee and the board in full, that I think there are some very real differences from a girls varsity wrestling or any independent girls wrestling team under our, you know, under, under our school district than, say, a new team in its entirety coming in and saying, can we just get started? Right? Because the girls are already competing in wrestling, and they are competing in a way that I think is unsatisfactory to many, understandably so, just because of the nature of the, the PIA not having this, and it was great that they did move in that direction. And so I think the board, I, I would be speaking to the board, I think perhaps with some receptive ears, that perhaps even if that particular policy applies strictly in words, then maybe we could just look at it to say that there really are some differences that the policy writers did not anticipate for, for wrestling. And as far as the, the, where we are, and I actually give some credit to you, Dr. Wayack, for giving us some leads here about, you know, Title IX, because we want to be sure that we don't come into any violation of Title IX with a number of coaches and all that kind of thing. Currently, we do not have very many female wrestlers within our program, but I, I am a big fan of Field of Dreams, and if you build it, you know, they will come approach, I, I think may well be something that is worth considering here. And so I, I, let me just say, maybe at our next meeting, let me have some more specific details, and, and I am surprised, and I have to learn more, because I was under the impression, and accurately so, that a Southernly High female wrestler who was participating would have access to participate in female, like, district and playoff events. So I have to learn more, because I, I thought one of our underlying rationale in, in sending that letter was so that that thing didn't actually happen. So I, I'll, I'll reach out to Mr. Spangler, he's excellent at this, and particularly at wrestling, and I'll see what information he can get, and then I'll make it a point at our next meeting to have a full report, and I'll reach out to kind of give an update for what I find.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that.
And, yeah, so a, a board report on the future of PIA double A girls wrestling here at Southernly High, and that fits actually right in with our policy, our intended calendar review, because we were going to be looking at the 100 and 200 series anyway, we'll make a note at the Policy Committee and look to bring our recommendation and bring that policy to the board with whatever the administration recommends and how to proceed in conjunction with the work that Dr. Mann and the information he'll be bringing us about that at a future board meeting about the actual sport itself. All right, thank you, appreciate it, appreciate it all around. Okay, any other new business or other business? Okay, seeing none, I didn't see anyone get up.
Ms. Gaiman?
Yes.
I would like to just recognize, 5th and 6th grade band performed at the Phantoms game. There were 85 students, so they were amazing, they were behaved. You take 85 students and walk them through that building, it, it's a lot. So a lot of recognition to Ms. Marston for coordinating, for Mr. McGinty, the parents that, and teachers who volunteered to keep those 85 students. It, I mean, there were thousands of people there, it's the biggest stage, so that we have staff that take the opportunity to create these events for our students. It was amazing, I was, you know, it's a, was a great day to be a Spartan, so shout out to Ms. Marston and Mr. McGinty for, for doing that. She's done it for, I don't know how many years.
Yeah, I, I, thank you. Thank you for mentioning that, thank you for mentioning that, yeah, my, my kids participated in that as well. It's an amazing event. I don't think there were quite that many at the time, to be honest, but, no, that's great to hear. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. So athletics and music, all our kids are doing great things, we appreciate it. All right, sorry, I didn't, I didn't see you indicate, anyone else before I jump to, all right, visitor comment, I did not see anyone get up to sign in, I don't know, we do not, I'm getting confirmation, we do not have visitor comment. We do have, the board does have need of an executive session immediately following this meeting. We're going to be doing that down the hallway in the conference room, so if you, feel free to, you don't need to vacate this room, we're going to move ourselves into the other room to do that, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Everyone made the motion, Ms. Lobley, we are adjourned. Choose, choose to, that you want to put in the minutes.